Okay, it's 6:01. I'm going to call to order the special meeting set for October 10th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry, Mr. Garin, Mr. Troy, Mr. Quagliano, Mrs. Melendi, Mrs. Meyerino, Mr. Fleck.
Here. We do have a quorum, and the next item is the Electrical Trade Package bids for Huntley High School Fine Arts Edition. Mr. Rinkosik.
I tried to describe what transpired since the last meeting where we awarded bids, bid release one. So you know, we did rebid that. We tried to see what we could do to get the cost down. It has come down a little bit. We did have plenty of bidders at this time, so we feel it's a good, and it's a good company we've worked with before. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Can you talk a little bit about other ways to provide for staying as close to budget as we can with these bids?
We have, we have a few proposals we will bring in the Board of Education yet, prices that aren't solidified. The audiovisual equipment, the final equipment that we'll budget in, to put in, that'll connect all this rough end wiring, the lighting. The, I don't think there'll be much flexibility with music storage, the musical equipment storage boxes, because the school team, I think, did a pretty good job at doing an inventory of what their needs are on that one, and that's, that's pretty fixed. There are allowances in the bids. Each bidder has an allowance in their bid. It adds up. Tom McGrath from Lamp and Kirsta Emke are here, and they're welcome to join us in the conversation. Tom, I don't know if you have a recollection of the total on all the allowances that are in there? Is it like a hundred?
So I think if you, if you remember, our goal with this rebidding process was obviously to save more than the $16,000 that we're saving. But, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rinkosik, but with a rather healthy FFNE built into this overall budget, or Mr. McGrath, if you have something to add, this, the lighting and sound savings that we're anticipating from what was originally projected could help us achieve or come close to achieving what we were originally hoping to save with this rebid. So we're finding areas to save within the original plan that will be beneficial and help us get a little closer to what was intended for the budget to be. Is that accurate?
I, I think we will get closer, yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have questions, comments?
Yeah, I have one. Is, is it something out of the ordinary that caused this, or is this just, is there additional work in this beyond what was expected that caused this?
I, I personally expressed some strife when we got the visit first time, Paul, and we actually invited the low bidder into the office and interrogated them and invited them to offer ideas on how to value engineer this down, to, to, what to consider for a rebid, and they were very cooperative. The reality is, the highlights are, we have to run a new electric service, because the existing facilities are not at that end of the building. Not a new electric service from ComEd, but part of our main switchgear, one of the two main services to that building. We have to go back to the, to the main breaker of that part of the building and run a new power source down to this, to this addition, just by the nature of where we are size-wise and build out of the building as we're receiving it to add on to.
Okay.
And it is a good distance from our main technology room, and some of the infrastructure we have going in needs to have home run wiring all the way to the main, main room, and, and that's not, that's, that's a little bit of a burden on us as well.
That's kind of what I was looking for, or, that's kind of one of the things that I was wondering, is if it's something unique to the project that caused this to grow in price beyond what was anticipated. So that sounds to me like it's addressing a unique condition that may not have been foreseen necessarily, as I understand, from what I understand from what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rinkosik. With that, I will make a motion to approve the bid from Kerry Electric for the Electrical Trade Package number 26-1A for the Fine Arts Edition in the amount of $519,900.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano, Mr. Fleck, Mrs. Melendi, Mr. Garin, Mr. Gentry, Mr. Troy, Mrs. Meyerino.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Armstrong, do we have any public comment for this meeting? Okay, there being none. It's 6:07. I will make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. And now I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, October 10th. It says it's 6:05, but we'll start at 6:07. Let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Meyerino, Mr. Fleck, Mr. Troy, Mrs. Melendi, Mr. Garin, Mr. Quagliano, Mr. Gentry.
Okay, we have a quorum. And with that, let's have Principal Jennifer Zayas come up and introduce the people that will be leading us in the pledge.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we have some students. They have received their positive office referrals, so those are their positive office referrals over at Chesapeake. They are our first ones at the beginning of the year that they got their positive office referrals. So they're here to say the pledge. You want to say your name and then your grade, okay?
Madison, and I'm in second grade.
Nolan, and I'm in second grade.
Alyssa, and I'm in first grade.
Andrew, and I'm in first grade.
And I have Vivian, and she's in kindergarten.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hello to all of you. Is there somebody sitting? Oh, see, I can only see. Hi. Okay. Well, thanks for leading us in the pledge of allegiance, and thanks for getting, Dr. Zayas, what is it, a positive, positive office referrals. That's great. Okay. Y'all don't have to answer, but I'm going to ask each, every one of you a couple of questions, and you can tell me what you think. What is your favorite subject in school so far?
Math.
Math.
Art.
Art.
Music.
Music.
Art.
Art. Okay. We're good. Okay, and I heard about something called the new Explorer Special. Do you guys know what that is?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, how do you, tell me about it, and how do you like it?
Good, and you get to like make stuff.
Really?
I do arts and crafts.
Arts and crafts, okay.
Except because we have our teacher named Miss Apple, and she's funny.
Good. What do you think of the Explorer Special?
I don't really even know.
Oh, okay.
You learn it out, Billy, and lots of cool stuff.
Okay, very good. Okay, we're going to come up behind you guys and take some pictures, okay? But thanks again for leading us in the pledge, and you guys have a great rest of the, the, the school year, okay? All right. Okay.
Good job, you guys!
Great, great. Thank you. There you go. Good job.
Good job, buddy. Go, go, go this way. Thank you. Good job, guys. Good job. Good job, girl.
Thank you, Tommy.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, is there any public comment for this meeting, Mr. Armstrong?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we, wow, we're flying along here. We're going to revise and adopt the agenda. Let's go through and see what we have. Dr. Schlitzer, you have something, correct?
When the curriculum committee-
Correct, correct the old committee, yes. We have things there, we have things on human resources, we have finance committee, building and grounds. I don't have anything on legislation this time around. Got a few things on Board of Education. So, all that being said, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second? Okay, second from Ms. Melendi. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the curriculum committee. Mr. Garin.
Thank you. First item, five dot one, is the ESSA in-school report card update. Dr. Schlitzer.
Thank you. And in your packets, you'll see a presentation that, actually, Mr. Armstrong is just working on pulling up, and in the meantime, we'll just kind of start talking through and kind of catch up as we go. The purpose of this tonight is really just a reminder. We're, we're deep into report card season, and we're following some state timelines, and we just want to make our board and our public aware of where we are and where we're headed on that timeline. And so in your packet, what you'll see is that we have a presentation. It's similar to what we looked at last year in format, in terms of just reminding ourselves what is going to go into our summative designation. There have been some updates. Oh, there we are. No clicker. Okay, we can go to the next one. So the purpose is really just to kind of review the report card reporting, essentially to know what goes into those summative designations. As we said last year, it's somewhat of a complicated formula, but the purpose for the state is really to make it a little bit more equitable and to make it more balanced than it was before when it was just one test score. So a reminder, we have ESSA, which you'll hear spoken with ISBE, you'll hear it coming through in legislative updates. It's the Every Student Succeeds Act, and that reauthorized No Child Left Behind several years ago. And so essentially, it's the school accountability law. That's really when we say ESSA, that's sort of colloquially what we're talking about. The whole purpose is to guarantee equal opportunity for students, and I, I just want to emphasize that, because I think sometimes we get lost a little bit. Even No Child Left Behind, though it was flawed, the purpose was to guarantee equal opportunity, which is something that I think we all support. We always want to make sure that we don't just look at averages and end up losing the fact that all of our students deserve to succeed, and I think our state is continuing to try to make steps towards that from our public information. So the way that this works is that we are going to receive a summative designation. This is going to be every year, right around this time in October. They look at last year's data. So every school has issued this summative designation, and it's essentially a ranking. So that's important to emphasize, because there is not one cut score. Nobody in the state is saying if you're above this, you're this designation, and if you're below, it's going to change every year, because they look at what percent of the schools in the state are distributed, and they draw a line under the top 10% and over the bottom 5%. So that line moves every year based on where schools are. And the ranking is based on two large-scale categories. The largest is our core academic indicators, and we'll talk about what those are. And then the second is school quality indicators. So they're trying to acknowledge that there's elements about our schools. They might not be specifically academic achievement in nature, but they are important to our students' success. So some changes in our summative designations for this year, and we'll just go kind of quickly, because we, this is a little bit of a recap from last year. One large change is that always before, the subgroup relating to students with disabilities was students who had IEPs only, and that was it. They've actually changed the designation. You will now see occasionally coming from the state, the acronym CWD, they love acronyms, right? CWD, which is Children with Disabilities, and that actually includes all of our students with IEPs and with 504s. Again, I think a step in the right direction to acknowledge that we want to include all of our students in the designation. For the first time, science proficiency is included. If you recall, last year, they didn't have enough years of science data from the Illinois Science Assessment, so they didn't include it. And our Five Essentials Climate Survey for each school is now included into our designations. You, you may recall as a parent taking that survey, only the student portion of the survey is included in our summative designation. So these are the core academic indicators. They're 75% of the total. So ELA stands for English Language Arts. That's what we typically here call literacy, but it includes writing, reading. So you'll see on the left in the green, we've got English Language Arts proficiency. Proficiency is what percentage of students meet a benchmark. Math proficiency. EL is English learner progress to proficiency, and I want to just mention this one specifically, because again, I think this is a step in the right direction. It actually is kind of complicated, but I think it's a step in the right direction. So what the state has done is they have said, we have to acknowledge that when our students come in as English learners, when they start in our system, they should be exiting our system, right? They should not be English learners forever. So they, we should be able to test them. After five years, they should exit. So what the state does is it takes a reading on where they are on the assessment when they start. It averages out what kind of progress that student should make each year for the next five years to exit, and it actually really holds our schools in our district accountable, that our EL students are progressing towards English proficiency the way that they should. So that indicator is very specific to that subgroup. We have science proficiency. And the two largest actually are English Language Arts and Math Growth, and then obviously our high school graduation rate. So those are our core academic indicators, 75% of the total. School quality indicators are not fully built out yet by the state, so the climate survey is new for this year. Last year, similarly, we had chronic absentee rate. We acknowledged that the students are here, they can succeed. And our ninth graders who are on track for graduation. Anything in gray is slated for the future. I will say, they did initially intend to have the college and career readiness indicators set for this year. They had a lot of trouble with gathering the data, so they pushed that out a little bit. However, we did report to the state on that, so we're kind of doing some test runs with gathering that data. So percentage-wise of, we've got our 75% are the core academic, and our 25% are the school quality. This is a breakdown of overall, in the entire designation, what percent is each of those categories. So we go K8 is one band, 912 is another band. So if we look at K8, you can just kind of look down. Clearly, growth is the highest, so growth is 50% of the total. And then you can see the, the percentage that each of the following indicators makes up, so ELA, math proficiency, and so forth. Something to note is just that in high school, graduation rate still is 50% of the total. So that is, that is very, very large. The reason that there is no growth measure in the high school yet is just because the SAT has not been given for enough years for them to calculate that. So they've substituted that with graduation rate. And you do see, we have a couple of, we have ninth grade on track as well, but substantial similarity. We did get some questions internally about if you are really looking at the percentages, why are they a little different from one table to the next? So for example, the climate survey is 5% for K8 and 6.67% for high school. In case you're noticing that and wondering, it really just has to do with how they're equalizing it to reach 100%, because ninth grade on track was slid in there. They haven't given us a specific reason as to the exact details of the tenths and hundreds portion of the percent. But the point that they wanted to make was to get it generally in a spot where it could reach 100 and have about the right amount of weight. In the next slide, this is just the same exact thing, but as a pie chart. So again, a visual representation. So who's included in this? And these sound kind of technical, but it is somewhat important. We had a lot of advocacy in the state from schools last year saying, who are you including? Who are you counting? Because we want to make sure that if a student transferred in two days before the end of the school year, is that student counted for our district or for the district they came from? So some of these, these guidelines are that students who've been at school for 134 days in our district are counted. The subgroups have at least 20 students, and the subgroups you can see listed down at the bottom, again noting that we have the designation of children with disabilities, including students with 504s this time. Here's the process for what they do. Again, a little bit complicated. I think the intent is good, a little bit complicated. Essentially, what they do is every one of those indicators, climate survey, growth, it gets a score, a scale score, and then it gets converted by multiplying it by percent to a percent out of 100, and it essentially comes up with an overall scale score for that school overall. So it calculates that school index scores, and then rank orders all school in the state. So you just get a big giant list of every school in the state, from the highest index score overall to the lowest. And what it does then is they take the top 10%, draw a line, bottom 5%, draw a line, which is again why it changes each year a little bit. And that is how they look at the ranking. It then does the same thing for subgroups. This is the state's visual representation of the drawing of the line, but I think it makes sense, that we've got our top 10%, our lowest 5%. And again, it does that same thing for subgroups, so every single subgroup is subject to that same exact treatment. And the reason that that's important is because if any one of our subgroups falls into that lower 5%, automatically a school would be designated underperforming. So the state is taking very seriously the idea that if a subgroup is underperforming, everybody's underperforming. There has been discussion of the fairness of that at the state level, but I think they're making a philosophical statement that you cannot say a school is well-performing if all students are not exhibiting that. Again, that can be debated, and it has been. There have been schools where you have quite a small subgroup of students, so it's maybe 21 students, and we have to tell the public, maybe, if that's us, we would have to tell the public that it was that subgroup, and that's 21 students that know that it was their scores that caused that. This is very painful for some schools across the state, so we've had different levels of conversation. But again, philosophically, I think it's right. From an equity standpoint, we all, we need to make sure we have our eyes on all kids, and we can't congratulate ourselves just because the majority of students succeed. We can keep going, Dan? Here are the summative designations. These are the exact same as last year. So an exemplary designation is a school performing in the top 10% statewide with no underperforming subgroups. A commendable school is a school that does not have any underperforming subgroups, is not in the top 10%, and is in that middle ground between those two lines. An underperforming school is a school with an underperforming subgroup. And any school in that bottom 5% or with less than a 67% graduation rate would be in that underperforming category or lowest performing. I will say that one change the state made because of advocacy last year, many, many districts felt that these designations were punitive in nature, and like I said, unfairly called out small groups of kids. So they changed, there used to be colors last year, like blue, green, yellow, red. They changed it all to the same color. Again, the advocacy was, maybe that didn't necessarily address the issue, but they did make that change. So you, you should not be seeing the blue, green, yellow, red with these as we go to public reporting. So where are we now? And actually, we just got some guidance today from the state to clarify some of these dates. So on October 1st, administration received early notice of the designations, which was nice, those are not yet public. On October 21st, media and the districts will receive officially embargoed information and data. So our news outlets will start to receive this data on October 21st, but it will be embargoed until the 30th. So generally, what happens at that point is our media starts to analyze it. They call districts, they start to get their stories ready, they ask for comment. And then on October 30th is when we will be seeing those stories hit the public, as well as our school report cards being published. At the November Committee of the Whole is when we will provide our, our public update, as well as a data presentation, to share with the board where some of those designations came from, and some more actually celebrations, I think, that we're going to see with some of those designations and with our data. So this was just kind of running through real quick, a little bit of update from last year, a little bit of what's new, but just to kind of get our minds in the right place and thinking forward as to what will be coming down the pike. So with that, if there are any questions, I am happy to try to answer them.
Ms. Melendi, do you have a question?
I do. So you mentioned climate survey. Can you talk about what that entails? What are they, what are they looking at for that indicator?
Yeah, so for quite a few years now, at least six or seven, the state has put forth a climate survey called the Five Essentials Survey. It's out of the University of Chicago, so it's well-validated. It's actually even been publicly reported in the past, but it hasn't been mandatory. So schools were taking it every two years. Now they're taking it every year, and what it does is it's looking at leadership qualities, teacher collaboration, students feeling safe, so those sorts of culture and climate indicators. And that is public information on the report cards. So each school receives, they actually kind of color-code it in each of those areas for how well a school is doing in those areas.
I'll add that, that in years past, we've, we've, we've tried very hard to use the Five Essentials Survey to validate and work off of, to grow, and it's, it's been very difficult to, to break down and understand how the ratings correlate with the questions that they ask and what that real, desegregated data is. And I can tell you from experience as a principal, in this district where, you know, 85% of, of staff would report strongly agree or agree, and a rating somehow inexplicably comes in as, as average to less implementation, that they didn't correlate, and we couldn't get justifiable answers. get justifiable answers. So, just this year, we have been asking and asking and asking for a few years, and this year, they actually released to us, surprisingly, the entire state's segregated data. So, we're in the process of-
Every school in the state I have a spreadsheet now.
Every school in the state. So, we can tell you how every school in the state's doing in terms of their climate and culture, but we're only concerned with ours. So, we're in the process in the background, trying to break down every question and how it's all done, so that we might actually find something we can use. Because right now, the Five Essentials doesn't provide us anything that we can use other than trying to move a measure that we don't understand, and no one can truly explain to us. But yet, it's lauded by all the academics in the state. So, hopefully, we'll learn something that we can actually use to benefit us.
It's taken by students in grades four through twelve.
As well as staff and parents.
And staff and parents.
Yeah, I remember. I think we took that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. We do have a pretty high return rate. The reason they don't include parents in the summative designation is actually because in some districts, they really struggle to get a return rate that lends toward valid data, but we usually are able to do that.
Thank you. One more quick question. You talked about the subgroups and said that the children with disabilities includes all students with IEPs or 504s. Have we always included children with 504s, or that's new this year?
That is new this year.
Correct? So, now they're doing IEPs and 504s together?
Yep.
And that's what they're considering, children with disabilities?
Yes, absolutely. So, they're not actually even pulling out a separate quote-unquote IEP subgroup. It's all children with disabilities together that have those accommodations.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, I had a star burst before I asked my question. I actually have two questions, mostly comments, I guess. I remember this discussion last year. So, it seems like last year, we had a lot of concerns because it seems like the state kind of didn't have their act together. Now, they seem to have their act more together. Are we still comparing apples and oranges with other districts? In other words, are we, is our data matching up with other districts' data, or are we getting more detailed when we submit than other districts in the state are doing?
In terms of are we submitting more specific data than other schools are?
Yes.
We're all submitting the same. So, a lot of it is pulled out of the state system, like we don't have control. We take the test, it goes in the system. Quite a bit more, and this is where any variability comes from, and it does concern us. I'll be candid about that. So, for example, the college and career readiness indicators, we report those. There's a gigantic spreadsheet that Dr. Bzinski's department's working with myself and Mr. Johnson and Mr. Bealan, and like part of that, for example, is, you know, students who have a job for so many hours outside of school. We can't validate that, so we're asking students. And so, I anticipate there will be an amount of variability around that once we do get to the point that they're reporting it. Maybe that's one of the reasons the state's holding back a little bit before they start putting that in there. The assessment data, the absentee data, those kinds of things get pulled straight from our student information system, so that would be uniform across districts.
And I seem to remember this from last year also. This is a federal act, so they're comparing states as well. And if I remember last year, Illinois was asking for a lot, lot different data than other states were doing. Has that been normalized yet, or are we still in submitting statewide information to the federal government compared to other states? Is that an apples and oranges issue still?
That is an apple and oranges issue for sure. Each state made their own S A plan to comply with the federal regulation. Illinois has a plan that is quite complicated and involves many more data points than other states do. The folks in the state, state board, will defend that and say, we do that because we didn't like only counting one test score. However, there's so much variability between states, that then when we look at some of that national reporting, it is absolutely apples and oranges.
Yeah, that's my concern, because if you're not really looking at the same data set between here in Wisconsin or here in Alabama or wherever, how can you make a comparison nationally of how states are doing with their public education system?
You really can't, although obviously, national media will do so. Another example of one that's going to be different, probably even among districts in Illinois, but absolutely between states, it sounds like it's a straightforward one, but that chronic absentee rate, how districts code an absence, and then what the state counts it as? Is it excused? Is it unexcused? Are we adding up five periods of tardies and calling it excused really different across districts? That is actually a frontier that we are going to be looking at very hard. We've already started pulling it apart with Mr. Bealan and Mr. Johnson and Dr. Bzinski, because we have a feeling that there's some pieces there that we need to address. That's really different across schools. Also, candidly, we do see differences in graduation rates, slight differences sometimes, but there is absolutely some kind of difference in how graduates are being coded, because some of the differences don't make a lot of sense to us. So, we're pulling those apart. I think the differences between states are much larger, as you said, but still, we do have those concerns in Illinois as well.
Any other questions, comments? Nope. All right. Thank you very much, and we'll move to five dot two. The Huntley High School International Trip to Europe, Global Leadership Summit. Dr. Schlucker again.
Thank you, and this is another one of those exciting ones that we all hear about and want to go on. Before we talk a little bit about this trip for approval, I do just want to remind us kind of the big picture, is that quite a few years ago, Huntley High School put together a five-year travel plan. It's now been redone once and needs to be redone again. Or five times. But we need to, we need to continue extending it. Essentially, what we're looking at is we really want our kids to have that experience of international travel, but we want to make sure that we have a good handle on it, we have the support of the board, and it's doable for our families, and also the valuable experiences. So, the trip that we have on tap for tonight is on our current five-year plan. I do just want to let the board know, though, that in November, we've really been working with the high school, and especially in regards to our global academy, which is actually sort of driving some changes a little bit with this international plan. We are intending to bring a revised version of the longer-range plan next month as well as an additional trip, because we need to make a few adjustments just to help kids get that global academy credit. And so, for now, we're sticking with what's on the current plan, and we'll just be coming back to it again next month to make a couple revisions. So, with that, we have one of our Global Leadership Summit trips, and this is for the summer of 2021. It'll be in Europe, and we have Mrs. Sharkey here. She can tell us maybe just a little bit about it and take any questions.
So, the trip we're taking is a Global Leadership Summit. So, that means there's an international student leadership conference. There's about two thousand students from all throughout the world that end up in this tour. It's actually in Berlin. The tour is twelve days long that we're looking at, and so, its focus is on human rights and international justice. The big theme we're looking at is the idea of creating a sustainable future, which ties into a lot of our goals of the global academy and everything there. The countries and the places we're looking to go to, the conference is in Berlin, so we'd be starting in Berlin in July, and so, it's about July seventh, we'd head out. Then, we'd have a couple days of touring there, as well as the leadership conference. From there, we'd be able to move out to the Netherlands and Belgium. Part of the reason for this tour was that focus on human rights that we really saw as something a lot of our students are interested in. We'd get a chance to visit the EU Parliament, the International Court of Justice, work with NGOs in the Netherlands as well as in Belgium. So, it's really got that idea of active participation for the students. We took our first Global Leadership Summit this last summer, so we did Eastern Europe for fourteen days with students, and it was an unbelievable experience. And so, we saw a lot of student growth that I think is different from some of our educational tours that we've done otherwise.
So, with that, we are proposing it for approval and requesting that we move that forward to the regular board meeting to approve for summer 2021, and we'll take any questions.
Just a comment. I do love, I do love the leadership summit part of it. I think that's, you know, makes it, adds a whole new wrinkle to it, and I think it's really appreciate, appreciate that that's in again, so I think it's a good thing.
Ms. Sharkey has taken a teacher leadership role in partnership with Mr. Truax, who really build our global academy and build it from the ground up, and she's done an exceptional job, and I just want to publicly thank you for your work. It's phenomenal. I'm very proud of the civic engagement opportunities that our students in our school district have, and I think that it'll pay us dividends down the road, especially if some of our kids decide to remain local and can engage locally in our political atmosphere.
Any other questions? All right, I recommend we move that forward to the board meeting. And, thank you. Then, we will toss it over to Mr. Gentry.
All right. HR Committee, first item up is six point one, Human Resource Update. Mr. Zier.
Just some of the updates from the Human Resource Department. One of the major updates, we're getting ready to do our wellness screening in the next couple weeks, so employees are in the process of signing up for that. So, we're very excited about the amount of people that have signed up so far, but hopefully in a couple weeks, we can increase that number. And then, we will be preparing for open enrollment from the beginning of November. So, a lot of state reporting getting done right now with salary for certified staff and non-certified staff through Iwas.
We'll move on to six point two, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one. That sounds very odd to say out loud. Calendar, Ms. Lombard.
Sure, and this probably could have gone into a variety of different committees, but it fell under HR this time, so sometimes it's been curriculum. Adam and I worked this year setting the calendar, and we did a different approach to that this year. We had a collaborative working committee, we had three administrators, we had six certified staff members, and then our HESPA president, all part of a working group that sat down and looked at different parameters in the calendar and determined where different things would best fit. We started by looking at what is the purpose for setting these days, what are those parameters that we're looking for? Spring break gets set kind of by consensus of the county schools, so that's already done in place. We looked at winter break, depending on where that falls, and the length of that. We talked about the February break, that has been part of our calendar now for a number of years. But the main two areas that we really focused on were the placement of parent-teacher conference and the four in-service days that we have. So, we really looked at determining as a collaborative group, what is the purpose of those days? And then, once we had that purpose, always going back to the strategic plan and what's best for our kiddos, on where those best placements would go. Because, Mr. Zier, we had, what, eleven of us were on the committee? We all probably could have had different personal reasons why this should fall here, that should fall there. But when we looked at it, going back to the strategic plan and back to our purpose for those different elements, it was really easy to go ahead and place things where they kind of best fit. We're also noticed that because we're a K-12 district, there are certain things that maybe would better align for certain periods of the calendar for high school or middle school a little bit earlier than elementary. We focus, or we work on quarters at the middle school, semesters at the high school, and trimesters at elementary. And so, when we looked at that, it was really trying to determine what's the best date, because we're not going to fit one that works for everyone. And so, when we look at the calendar that we're, we are recommending for the 2021 school year, there's not a lot of differences for next year as opposed to this year in looking at that. The first day with students would be August nineteenth, and the last day with students would be May twenty-seventh, if no emergency days are utilized, June fourth, if we used all five of those days. Keeping the same type of a structure with our in-service days, with the new position with the Director of Professional Development, that's something that this group, as well as other groups, will continue to look at for the future about in-service and the purpose of that, and maybe placements of those days. But right now, we have the four days. And so, a small change with that was a lot of those due because of the time of the year fall around maybe a holiday or a longer weekend. And typically, those had fallen on a Friday, but staff really talked about maybe putting those on the other end of the longer weekend or whatnot, because it really focused them on, hey, once we're done with this, these are things that we can immediately, you know, go out and try in the classroom that next day. And so, small change in that. There's one before school starts, and then one in October, so shortly after getting in, maybe some of the things that they talked about at the beginning of the year, whether it's a new curriculum, or things that they've been talking about in their PLCs to pull back together, where are we at, where do we need to go from there on those? Then, one in February, and then, staff really felt it was important to have one in the spring to look ahead to what's coming next year. Can we start discussions on some professional development there? And we went back and forth, because we know we have a lot of spring assessments that go on. There's AP testing, we've got the SAT, there's a variety of assessments in elementary. And so, the fourth in-service day is being recommended, it would be the Monday after spring break. Easter is a little bit later. It falls on, I believe, the fourth, so that fifth, that the kids would have a little bit longer, but staff would be coming back as an in-service day, and that worked best with where a lot of those assessments and things were falling a little bit later in that. And then, parent-teacher conferences, we know that there had been some discussion on, should that be a little bit earlier? And parent-teacher conferences really are helping parents understand where their students are at, but also building that school-parent relationship with a teacher. And so, as we looked at that, there's a variety of different opportunities to build that relationship at the beginning of the school year. And then, when we saw when those different grading periods were falling, it was discussed that we would keep that similar to where the elementary portion of that was, so that as parents are sitting down and really understanding, what are these standards, what does this mean if my child's in intervention, or those kinds of things? And that grading period falls right before the Thanksgiving break, and so, made sense that we would still continue that. Not that the others are not important, but we know that kids may struggle early, earlier than that. We have much easier way to get information to parents through the technology we have, but that shouldn't be our only source. So, it still would be if there is a student who is struggling, or there's been a change in their, their study habits or their grades, teachers would still be reaching out to parents early on. So, it's not, parent-teacher conferences are the first time that they should hear if there is a change, or maybe even that there's something positive going on. So, that's still something that we will continue to push, that that's early communication with parents.
How is the utilization of those conferences? Is it still skewed, as we get older, you get, the more sparse it gets?
Yes, yes. And administrators can probably confirm that. Even with elementary, you know, some of the concern when we put it around the, you know, the Thanksgiving break, but maybe, people, some people do take vacations, but they still want to set up a time, some phone call in during those days, but at the elementary, it's almost a hundred percent in every classroom, and then it starts to go down a little bit. Middle school doesn't just happen on this, because if we think about the number of students that are on a team, there's no way that you could get all of those parents, or all the parents who want to participate in that, in that day and a half that are going on. So, they actually start those conferences a couple weeks before, and people are coming in during their planning, and then they're still, but it does definitely decrease as we're going up. Mr. Zier, is there anything I'm forgetting about the process or about, we really felt the process was really good to sit around the table and do that, instead of passing it kind of back and forth with those components? And the staff that was on there started to understand better the challenges or the reasons that various secondary might be having some discussion about this. Well, elementary, they really started to understand more about the changes or the differences that were going to go on. And so, we're going to keep this process. We will probably shortly after winter break, get this collaborative group back together so that we can look at the 21, 22 school year. Any questions?
As far as the start date, I know there's been some consternation over time of how early, how late. Is there any type of issues or concerns around that as it stands right now?
So, this year, a lot of people talked about that, that this year was a lot earlier. This is, this next year is a little bit later on that. When we looked at historically, our calendars have either been, gosh, it's probably been for at least the last eight, ten years, looking at either two or three Wednesdays before Labor Day, dependent on where it falls. If we went much later, one of the things, and this is something that we'll discuss internally and all of that- internally and all of that, with it starting on the nineteenth, at the high school, wanting to be able to get finals done before winter break, right? We could come back and take that. How many kids are actually studying over those or whatnot? If we pushed it back any later, we would actually have even a larger discrepancy in the schedules or the semesters. I believe it's a thirteen or fourteen day difference in this calendar here. And so that was one of the things, depending on when Labor Day fell, I know that we will have staff and parents will always feel, let's start earlier, let's start later.
Right, right.
So when we looked at this, we felt that this was the best date as administration. We did not talk about that date. We decided to keep the that Labor Day component. That would be a much bigger discussion, but that's something that we will kind of look at depending on when Labor Day falls each year to determine that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you, when you went through this exercise, do you also take a look at the impact of summer school? Because a couple of years ago, we had summer school that got shoehorned in, and all of a sudden, it affected the Fourth of July week. Is that part of this discussion too?
We didn't talk about it per se in here. We have, we kind of do those together. That is something that's actually going to be coming very soon here, right? In November. But yeah, we did look at that week. We we looked at, depending on when the last day of school, they've they've also been doing some review on, we've had some three, five-day weeks, four, four-day weeks. We've looked at some of the blended classrooms and what that might look like. And so in November, there'll be some recommendations coming forward, but yes, we were absolutely able to look at that Fourth of July for this year.
And we are definitely cognizant of that issue.
Okay.
Yep.
Because it, like I said, it's it's gone back and forth.
Yes.
And and.
Works nicely with us.
Okay, good. Good.
But we won't spoil that for November.
And then the the February one.
Yes.
So that's right around President's Holiday. So the fifteenth probably is President's Day itself.
It is. So that is fifteenth, and then the sixteenth, so the twelfth is.
Friday.
Friday, the twelfth would be a non-student attendance day. The fifteenth would be President's Day, and so the district is closed. And then the sixteenth would be the in-service day for staff coming back.
Okay.
And we know that, knowing you, this is, there's probably not a lot of districts around our area that do this. On other parts of the country, you see different holiday breaks in in maybe in in January and March and all those different components on here. But we definitely know that, you know, this is a nice break for for the students, the staff. February is one of the shortest months, but you know, it's from winter break to the end of the year can can kind of be a long haul. But definitely have seen some just really positive things in how people come back, those students and staff re-energized and and.
Thank you.
Anything else? Now, we will carry that forward for approval. And on to six point three, a big, big word there, intergovernmental agreement. I'll turn to Mr. Zier.
Sure, the intergovernmental agreement between District 158 and Fox River Grove, District Three, we're presenting tonight. I'll give you a little bit of background here. If you go back about three or four years, you recall that we had a staffing shortage in the area of vision itinerants, where we were not able to provide vision services to our students. It's a shortage across the country. We made a move with some contract language that allowed us to recruit very competitively, and we now have three vision itinerants in the district. So servicing our students, we're able to do very successfully. This summer, a couple of our students who have those services moved out of the district. We still had our three vision itinerants. And knowing the boat we were in three or four years ago, where, you know, if there was someone around, we were looking for anyone around that could help us out, that wasn't the case. And knowing the boat that we were in three or four years ago, we've kind of been communicating around, some surrounding districts know that we have these vision itinerants, and we do have a little bit of extra FTE. So Fox River Grove has a student that needs services once a week. So we'd like to enter into this agreement so we could help them out a little bit. As we know, Fox River Grove, a little bit smaller district, so for them to be able to, you know, obviously, they're not going to employ a full-time person, but we do have the FTE right now. This contract would allow us to connect with them. The approval would come from this board at the next regular board meeting, and then you'll see there's also a place for Fox River Grove to agree to this. Dr. Rowe and I spoke with Dr. Tim Haffey, the superintendent of Fox River Grove, the other day, to kind of solidify everything in this contract. And we think it's, we're doing good, not only for that district, but for that student in that district that needs those services. So we're looking at, once a week, thirty minutes to an hour. As you can see in here, we have an hourly rate, and then also the mileage that Fox River Grove would be reimbursing the district for.
Any questions on that? I think it's a great idea, so. Creative and helpful.
Yeah, and and if something would happen, if we would have students move in that need those services, Fox River Grove knows, and also, you know, we can discontinue the services to Fox River Grove, just give them thirty days. Probably won't have to be in that boat, but we've opened up that line of communication through their special ed director and obviously through their superintendent. So if something would happen that, you know, we would have students move in, we'll have that flexibility to service our students first also.
Great. We'll move that forward, and that would conclude HR, and hand it over to the Finance Committee, Mr. Leglano.
Okay, Finance, seven dot one, we have our purchase orders, accounts payable, impressed checks and disbursements listed. Do we have any questions or concerns about any of those? That will move us forward to the Board. Item seven dot two is revenue and expenditures report. Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. You have the August two thousand and nineteen, two months ended. Financial executive summary in front of you. Two months in, you know, we continue to track within budgets, looking at total revenues and expenditures, even individually. We are tracking within budget and very consistent with prior year. So that being said, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on anything else.
Any questions?
Is this the time of year that some of our revenue is at zero percent brought in?
Yeah, very common, because a lot of our, a lot of our revenues, either we're waiting for the state and we don't recognize the revenue till quarter end, and/or it's a reimbursement type of grant, and we haven't filed reimbursements yet. For instance, for a federal, the IDEA grant, very common.
Okay. Probably as concerned as I am about health insurance claims or health claims.
You know, we are tracking a little bit above budget for for both months. But, you know, we continue to monitor that. We continue to monitor the number of large claims in the pipeline, and we'll just continue to do so. So, you know, I'm still fairly optimistic that some of our large claims will eventually go away.
Yeah, like those eights to be fifty.
Or five.
Five, yeah. Dates are big numbers. Eights are tough to absorb in that budget, so. Okay. That included is reimbursed on the SAFLOF too, right? Hundred and twenty-eight. Okay. Any other questions on this section?
Are there concerns, or is there anything on the registration side, or is it just too soon? They're at forty-nine percent. Is it too soon to to have that number be higher?
No, that's, it's very consistent with prior year.
It is.
And that's generally what we look at at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, it's up comparative enrollment is sliding down, right? Tracking with your date, so we should be okay there. All right, just a couple other items that I see. Again, our, you know, our operating expense per pupil is, you know, it's relatively low statewide. It is growing, I mean, it's been growing. It's up eight percent over the prior year. So I'm just making sure everybody's kind of in tune that that number is as low as it had been in prior years. It's starting to get up there, so.
Is that in part because we're doing a different accounting for the curricula?
No. No, the the operating expense per pupil number that you have there on the dashboard on page, well, it's on the back of the second page of the dashboard, that actually comes off the annual AFR as a result of the the audit.
All right.
I was looking for a reason.
That, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's how things are budgeted. I'm just pointing out that we're a little bit tuned. These things aren't going up two, three percent a year, they're going up a little bit more than that, so. Right, and it's, and part of it's, again, the function of enrollment is sliding down slightly, but the other items are, you know, they continue to go up a couple percent every year, so. All right, I'll keep that horse. More, seven dot three, revenue contracts. I think we have three revenue contracts in there. Any questions regarding those? That will move us forward to the Board for approval. Seven dot four, monthly fiscal reports. Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. Just two things to note, our partners with Evans, Marshall &amp; Peace will be here next week to present the two thousand and nineteen audit report, so stay tuned for that. We did just the other day receive the bound copy on that, and normally, we would present that at this meeting if we knew exactly when, in fact, we were to receive those bound reports from the auditor. So historically, we have always done that at the the October, or for the last several years, at the October board meeting. So the partner will be here to present the audit then. And we're still waiting for the counties to provide us the preliminary EAV and new construction reports. We should receive those any day now from the county. So we will definitely have an update for you, whether it's next week or the first week of November, so that we're in good shape going into the levy for December. So stay tuned on that as well.
Okay, any additional questions from Mr. Altmeier? Not many questions on our activity fund report. Nope. Okay, seven dot five, we have our photo bid amendment. Ms. Lombard.
Yes, and in the past, this one as well went to curriculum, but it didn't really make sense for it to go there, so we put it on finance, even though it doesn't cost you anything, so.
We made musical chairs.
We made musical chairs for these things. So we are at the end of a three-year amended contract with Life Touch for our photos, as we have done in the past. There's been a few times we've gone out to bid to look at the various services that are out there. Life Touch has been standing by their agreement from their original agreement in two thousand and seven. We did go back out to bid in two thousand and eleven, and it was granted to them again. But the last few times we've done an amendment to continue on that contract, they honor the prices for the parents from that original contract. Each time we look at this before determining whether we should do an amendment or or going out to bid, do reach out to all of the buildings. The buildings have been very pleased. We have positive feedback. Again, there's always going to be minor glitches with, you know, any kind of service that's out there, but Life Touch is right on that and willing to make that right either by the school or to the parent. And so our recommendation is that we would continue, so you thought the the last year was fun to say, to continue into an amended contract with Life Touch through the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So, and again, parents, what we've heard, have been pleased with this, the staff has been pleased with this. And again, since they are willing to to hold firm with their prices and things like that, we would like just to amend that contract for an additional three years.
Any questions? Is anybody?
I have, I guess I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I I looked at the contract, and it's minor. First of all, I'm totally on board with it, but I think we might want to look at the at the.
The words?
Language of the extension, because they did mention it started in, when, oh-seven or something, and then it was extended, but they're missing a few years that it was extended again, so maybe we should. Yeah, the language should ought to be in there just to cover the gap.
Okay, I can, I will definitely work with them on that. I think, yeah, they started in the twenty-eleven from when they went out to bid that second time, but if you're looking back, and then for the fourteen through the current, it's probably not in there. So yes, I can work with them and bring that back for new language next week.
Okay.
I actually read the contract.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking, I'm looking at what you're reading, and it kind of is awkward. So. So, okay, if you guys could address that and bring that to the Board for approval, that'd be great. All right, seven dot six is the expansion and modernization of the transportation system. Lombard and Dr. Pizzi, you guys are. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I've talked a lot, so Chris is going to do some, but I'll open it up, and then we're going to turn it over to him for all the technology components of that. But as you know, as a district, we're continually looking at our departments, how are they, the services that we're providing to our customers, our families and our students, and where do we make enhancements? How are they being effective? For the last number of years, we've really focused in the transportation department on our fleet. We've worked with the finance, we have a replacement cycle that's going well. We started actually looking, starting to investigate different types of buses that are out there. But in the spring, I started having some conversations with a variety of different administrators with technology, with our transportation department, in looking at the services that we do provide, and how can we expand those? How can we make those more modernized? There's a lot of different technologies that's out there. We currently use System for routing purposes, which is through Versitran. And there are a lot of different things, services, that we can provide to our community in looking at the needs, what are they looking for, what are they wanting? How do we enhance that? And so some of the things that we looked at, and were our primary areas of focus, were an increased student safety through student ridership data, along with bus location tracking through GPS. More accurate student ridership, which would help us and our drivers. We have a lot of times that we'll have sub-drivers driving different routes, knowing exactly who should be on that bus at any given time, and what exact stop should they be getting off at. More efficiency, gathering ridership and mileage data for various reports, improved route efficiency through audits of our current routes. And one of the best is the ability for real parents to get real-time arrival of when the bus would be there. We know that certain things do, construction, it could be an emergency, it could be a fire drill that was pulled, a fire alarm pulled at the last minute as kids are leaving, or weather with snow and and things like that. And there's a lot of technology out there that that can give that information to parents. Chris is going to go over, talking about some of the various software and hardware that we look at that can really help bring us into that next level with our transportation systems and the services that we provide.
Sure, thank you very much. What I'm going to do is kind of walk you through the the memo that's in your packet, pretty much in order of the things that are listed there, because they build on one another to get to the end product of of what we want to have for these modernized transportation systems. Up first is a product called Telematic GPS. Think of this as the little box that plugs into the onboard computer in your car. Insurance companies are putting these things out there to to track driver behaviors, that sort of stuff. These devices can also report back not only driver behaviors, but bus health, engine performance metrics, those sorts of things. These devices can report mileage counts for, and your mileage reports, those sorts of things as well. So it's going to help us through some efficiencies there as well, just to know what's going on in our buses, kind of the internals and the brains of the bus. Will all be self-reported by the bus.
One of the things there that is a benefit of that, probably, but where the, we will be able to be proactive on any problems with our fleet ahead of time, rather than waiting for the oil light to go on or whatever, maybe there that we'll be able to analyze this data back in the shop and really be able to be proactive about figure out problems before they become too large.
Yep. So that data feeds into a system that in our transportation department could actually see all this data basically real-time, and that's the on-screen software. I'm going to hold off on that for just a second and introduce Tyler Drive. Tyler Drive is a tablet-based interface that our drivers could use to actually navigate their routes. interface that our drivers could use to actually navigate their routes, in the tablet, the bus drivers would identify themselves, authenticate themselves to the system, which route they're going to be driving, and that route would then be loaded on the tablet for them, it would give them basically turn-by-turn directions for where to go, where the stops are at, which students are supposed to get on the bus at that stop, or which students should get off the bus at that stop, and then continue along, along their route, that system also has the capability, should there be an unexpected detour in the route, that the system will do what it can to get the bus back onto route in the most efficient means possible, it's not real-time updating GPS like you would think in your car or your phone, because it's got a very prescribed route to follow, but the system is gonna do what it can to get you back on that route without missing anything, that system also feeds into the on-screen software that would be utilized back here in our transportation department, so think of the on-screen software as the eyes and ears of the fleet from the transportation office here, where they could basically see any bus at any given time, basically real-time, who's on the bus, who got off the bus, where they got off the bus, who got on the bus, where they got on the bus, all those sorts of things, basically in real-time in the office here, so when phone calls come in from parents, where's my bus, they could see it right on the screen, pretty big improvement for our transportation department in the functionality of those desks, both in morning and afternoon routes, so some pretty significant benefits there, also part of the Tyler Drive tablet system is the ability to do pre and post- trip inspections, so prior to buses going on the routes for the day, there are certain aspects of the bus that are inspected by the drivers, we could actually have that inspection be accomplished via the tablets, so they could actually go around the bus with the tablet, identify the areas of inspection, verify that they've been inspected, that's all tracked and monitored, for our own record-keeping as well, kind of goes along with the automation of maintenance records, those sorts of things as well, so that's a big benefit to that function as well, and then maybe the biggest part of this, that's maybe the single biggest impactful benefit, especially for the community, is the product called My Stop, think of this as the, when's my bus gonna be here, is it gonna be late, if so, how late, can I get an alert when it's so many minutes away, those sorts of things, we've been looking at ways to do this for a handful of years now, think of those very cold winter days where sometimes our buses are maybe not quite as close to on-time as possible, we would hate to have students standing out at the bus stop any longer than necessary, a portal like this would give families the opportunity to see the bus en route and to modify their plans and the time that maybe they would leave for the bus in adverse weather, things like that as well, so the single biggest benefit to our community is that functionality would be, would be new to us, so those are the major hardware and software components, I do just want to walk you quickly through some of the timelines and the costs, because these are pretty significant, so we wanted to get them out there, it's a big project, so we've broken it into two phases, the first phase being Telematics GPS and a beginning use of that on-screen software in our transportation department to allow for training of the transportation staff, those sorts of things, this is behind-the-scenes data reporting for the buses, it's no impact at this point on our drivers, it's just the buses basically self-reporting what's going on, location tracking, it gives us good data on the routes that are actually being driven versus the routes that are in the system as the planned routes, those sorts of things, phase two would then be Tyler Drive, and later on in phase two, the actual parent portal, we were thinking towards the end of the school year, Tyler Drive introduction with bus drivers to bring them up to speed on the process of navigating their routes via, via the tablet-based transportation system, phase one timeframe, we're hoping to start in November, completion in February of phase one, phase two then actually overlapping a little bit, starting in December, in the idea of having phase two completed in April, now phase two being completed, meaning that we would have the ability to turn on, in a very limited fashion, a parent portal for limited testing, potentially yet this school year with the idea of turning on parent portal for the district come August of next school year, cost for the two phases, initial hardware cost in phase one, forty-seven, nine fifty-nine, and annual service cost of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, to give you a little idea of what goes into these annual service costs, these devices have cellular cards in them that allow the buses to report the data back in real-time, so a good portion of that is actually data connectivity cost, but also the ongoing licensing and maintenance of the software as well, the initial hardware cost in that phase one is in fact primarily those modules that get plugged into the buses, the installation of those, phase two, very much the same, the cost of the initial hardware is more, as we would expect that it would be when you're talking about putting a tablet into every bus, so think of one-to-one for buses, if you can think of it that way, so a little bit more expense there with the tablet devices, the installation of those devices, but you'll see the annual service cost is very much in line with the phase one cost as well, for exactly the same reason, those devices also have cellular connections to provide data connectivity back, so should there be a connectivity problem with one or the other, the second device can just pick up the slack with GPS locations, those sorts of things as well, that said, total cost for the overall project, initial years, two hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars, anticipated ongoing costs on annual basis, seventy-three thousand nine hundred and ten, those are high numbers, but keep in mind also, they're transportation costs that do qualify for state reimbursement in the transportation program, their reimbursement generally on an annual basis is between fifty and sixty percent, so while we're asking the board to approve the agreement at these numbers, generally speaking, we would get that reimbursement, it would come the following year.
Correct.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my, my initial reaction is it feels like, in a good, in a good way, it feels like an investment in safety and convenience, but, which is, like I said, a good thing, and I think it'd be valuable, I'm just struggling to see like a, like a hard dollar benefit that would kind of come back and help, you know, through cost savings, you know, what do we truly think we can get out of it from that perspective?
A good portion of that benefit that I think we'll see will actually be in the efficiencies in our transportation department, if you think about fleet maintenance and not having to wait until there's a significant problem with buses before actually addressing issues, because the system can track things like engine performance and degradation of performance over time, battery life over time, those sorts of things, rather than waiting until it's actually a problem, in addition to that, also the annual task of having to actually read odometers, things like that, it's just, it's just
Who's gonna monitor that, though? I mean, is it our mechanics are gonna monitor, who's, personnel-wise, who, because it's a lot of data now, so who's analyzing all that data, who has that time to do that?
So it would be a variety of different, it could be our mechanics, it could be our director, our assistant director, it could be dispatchers that are up there, and so it would be a variety of those things, and then Laura is back here, and so is Jen, if, if you want to jump in on any of these answers, too, I think that's one of the components we'd have to look at, it would be a shift, and while they'd be analyzing that, it would be instead of other paperwork that's coming in from the drivers, and it would be earlier on, so they're still doing that, it's just more paper pencil now after the fact.
Right, okay, and that's fair, I just, so, overall, though, is there a net addition to time, and do you need additional personnel, the question would be, are you gonna need more personnel than you currently have to be able to monitor and take advantage of the information that's being provided?
I would say, no, I can't promise that they would not ever ask for more personnel, because with our fleet that we already currently have, and the age of the buses there, I know that they do the best that they can, we only have three mechanics for our fleet, and I know that's, probably that ratio is below, so I know that there may be something down the line where they would ask that for additional staffing, but not due to this system.
You know, it's, it's interesting, I mean, foray into, you know, some major technology to really get some great data here.
I think, I think for me, from, where this, this came from for me was when I, honestly, my last year as a principal, I was riding on a, on a bus, on a, on a field trip to NIU, and our bus driver was, was using directions in a nap, printout in their hand, and the other thing was, he was terribly wrong about that for me, well, of course, the driver was very safe, but it's not completely hands-free.
Yeah.
So that was, that was question number one, and what I find most interesting, what the biggest advantage for me comes in, in the safety, not only of our driver and our students with the hands-free GPS that it will provide, the subs having turn-by-turn GPS, which is a big issue for us, and we received the most complaints.
Complaints, yes.
This year have, the volume of complaints have come from, my bus is late, and it just so happens it's because a sub was on there and they're trying to figure out the route, it's perfectly explainable, but not to a parent who has other things to do, and they're waiting on the bus, and then as well as, as the driver is physically must walk to the back of the bus to scan their QR code to ensure that they've done the safety check at every single point before they can begin their route, ensures there's no children on the bus, ensures that everything is in working order, and we know we've been there before.
Yep.
So those safety concerns, as well as the GPS, and then you add in the positive benefit of the parent communication, our parents have been clamoring for this for years, while we may not net a ultimate financial benefit in offsetting cost, I think it's the service and added safety, that with the fifty percent reimbursement, after the first, we swallow that first big gulp, it becomes a very reasonable and explainable purchase that we're, service we're providing.
The construct I'm thinking of it as is saying, two seventy-three, investment for all, great, great things, you get half of it covered, and from a decisioning standpoint, then if you say one thirty-five or one hundred and forty thousand, and some potential cost savings from servicing, repair, et cetera, do you make twenty-five, fifty percent of that back, we might have a net out of seventy thousand, and then as a board, does we, is that worth the investment, and then how low does that number need to get to where you, you know, we can believe in the affordability of it.
And the size of our fleet is a hundred and ten buses?
So, in this annual service cost, it doesn't contemplate equipment replacement down the road, does it?
No, no, it doesn't, the, the way this is put together for a fleet of a hundred and ten is actually to have some spares on hand to handle breakage or damage, things like that, there is a life cycle to these devices. We're anticipating at least a four- to five-year useful life of any of these devices, that's what we've been talking about with Tyler Technologies.
Right, so this becomes, it's a slightly higher life cycle than say our computers we're using for the kids, that type of thing, but it becomes a similar type of cycle that we're doing, it's a slightly longer cycle to deal with. Okay, so, and the issue ends up being, once you go this route, you can't go back, because the standard is, you set the standard of what you're providing, and what the service level is, and what parents' expectations are, so all of that plays in there.
Have we talked to any other districts, are any other districts doing something similar like this, how is that working for them?
Yeah, so several districts in the area are, namely District 300, Coverage, and Very Good Bowl, in fact, when I was a parent in District 300, I had access to this as a, as a parent, so it's been, it's been in place there for a number of years, and several other districts as well in the areas, with very high success rates, and very well accepted, especially in the community.
Have any of those districts done an analysis like Tony was suggesting as to what may there's Kevin, return on the investment for saving on repairs, did the repair costs go down, did their replacement costs go down, in addition to the service that it's intended to provide primarily, have we heard from those districts?
Not specifically from those districts, we have had several conversations with companies, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
If you could reach out, I'd be curious.
Find out who's having those conversations.
I do see the benefit, I believe those numbers are gonna be positive, and if we get half reimbursement for two years, the first two years because of the big upfront cost, we're looking at about seventeen dollars per student per year, and then get half that back, we're at eight and a half dollars per student, for the service that we're getting, you know, that's pretty good, even if we don't get a benefit on the, on the operations and maintenance side, but I think we will.
For sure, okay, thanks.
And there is a way to offset it, so, and that would be? Yeah, that's one. Extra ten cents, no, no, there is one way, no.
No, you could, you, you.
There are multiple ways, apparently.
No, no, there's, some more creative way, but registration, yeah, you could raise registration fees, like five bucks a year, something like that, could help cover that, but.
And I'll tell you, that conversation has come up behind the scenes, is it time to do that, it's, we reluctantly even engage in, in cabinet, but it, that has been brought up, as well as the fact that we don't, we don't offer or charge a technology to you and our school officials and all that, that's around us, so those things could be certainly explored if you'd like us to.
If there's, if there's cost to you, like people and boards and parents concerned, that even when you're passing the option, you can lay in a service.
Are there competitors for, like, competing vendors in this space?
There, yeah, there's a number of systems out there that provide pieces of this, because these are all products that are made by Tyler Technologies, they're purpose-built to integrate with the system and software we already have in place, what we were finding is many of the systems could do proportions of this, but we weren't finding anything this inclusive.
Like, the contract is, you're buying the hardware, I think, but you're licensing the software.
Correct.
So we're not buying the software.
Correct.
I read that contract, too.
Okay, all right, any, any other questions?
You talked about the technology for the students to scan on and off the bus, so will parents then be able to semi-track their child, like, why'd you get off at this stop, or go home with so-and-so?
Yeah, so, and we've looked at different options of what that card would look like, and maybe that would vary depending on the age of that, so a student should not be getting off of a stop at somewhere else, and so a parent with this, and again, this is definitely something at the beginning of the year, as drivers are getting to know the students for the safety, but then, while we have sub-drivers that are on there, if they scan that, it would alert right there that Jessica's trying to get off at her, this is not her stop, and we would not allow that student to get off at that stop then, so it would ensure that they were getting off at the current, the correct stop.
That is a feature that has a lot of logistics that we have not worked out the details of, and we don't have to implement right away, and it would be one that we would work towards, before we have a, a, a system that makes sense and is not gonna be overburdening someone on the buildings to manage another card as they put kids on and off the bus, but it's an added feature that, that would be beneficial, just ensuring students are on the bus and that they get off the bus, so they have that accountability.
And I think that's important to clarify, the, the, the actual card scanning of students on and off the bus is not included in what's presented tonight, that would be an additional added function, what would happen now on the buses is the drivers on the tablet would see a list of students and their pictures at any given stop.
We are currently, we are currently doing that at the start of the school year in a very, very fun and eighteen sixty-five kind of a venture of
Eighteen sixty-five.
Checkmarking students, I, you know, I did it myself the first couple of days of school at Chesapeake, and it's, it's a labor-intensive process that is the, is the, but it's the sole reason why our buses are not running on time day one, because we want to be sure the right students are getting on the right buses, and the drivers, as they get to know those students, it becomes much faster, but pictures and, and just checking them in is a much faster process, obviously.
And that is part of the initial. Yes, yeah, the, the pictures and the names right on the tablet screen is all part of what's presented here tonight.
All right, so here, here's what I would propose to my fellow committee members, if you guys are okay with this, moving it forward to the board, not putting it on consent, right, having a little bit of further discussion on it, I think most of the candidates are on it, right? Yeah, yeah, and what I would tell all board members is, it's kind of an important step, so look at this pretty hard, going in the board meeting and making sure you don't have any major reservations. going in the board meeting and making sure you don't have any major reservations about its cost and what it's about. So, that's what I think we'll do here.
Yeah, I think your, your point is a good one, is it's a quasi-commitment to an annuity for a long, long time.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I would encourage you.
And a level of service you're.
If questions do arise during the week that we can answer for you, please reach out and engage, we can help, help you formulate that decision.
Yeah, I would also add, just food for thought, you know, we, we do operate our buses ten-plus years. You know, they're diesel buses currently, we are looking into propane. But that being said, you know, we do operate our buses ten-plus years, a diesel bus can go up to two-hundred thousand miles. I think from a fleet management standpoint, and I kind of came from a fleet environment in my previous life at GE, I, I do believe that the software that is going to be added, that's gonna provide a lot of great information to our mechanics, will not only probably save us, you know, significant dollars from major repairs, because from a, from a major repair standpoint, we do spend quite a bit of money because we are driving nine, ten, eleven-year-old buses. So I do believe that this software will save us money on a repair and maintenance standpoint moving forward once we start getting really good information out of it. So, you know, and knowing that this, the state of Illinois is reimbursing us fifty-five percent for, you know, the upfront capital cost on these and moving forward. You know, I, I, I agree with, you know, Dr. Rowe and team, I think this is a good thing. I think we will reap benefits and cost savings down the road. It's not gonna happen year one or year two or year three, but certainly down the road, I think it's a very positive thing for our fleet, because maintaining and managing one-hundred-and-ten buses, which by the way, over time may reduce, right? We do have decreasing enrollment, you know, we could see bringing that down, which will help offset some of the pain here as well. Because if we can keep more buses on the road because of this tool, we're gonna need fewer spare buses as well. So you gotta think about those few things as well.
No, these are all valid, good points. We'll do what I've suggested, we'll move it forward to the board for, not on consent though. The, the last question is, and we get this dealt with in the budget, how for this year?
Because it's a reimbursement-type basis, it's, it's not one-hundred percent baked into the budget, but we can definitely absorb it, especially within transportation.
Okay. Very good. Let's move on to building and grounds.
Thank you, number eight dot one, O and M updates. Anything exciting to highlight on here, Mr. Rinkosik?
Solar, a matter of solar, we did get a letter from Lake in the Hills telling us they accept the, they endorse the plans, the construction plans is developed. So we're in the final steps of, develop, our partners in final steps of developing documents to submit a building department to the, a building permit to the National Office of Education. So start is very, is, is near, it's nearby. The other two villages should be close. We're on the drawing board for projects for next summer. We're having a first meeting about detailed design next week on the Conan McDavid parking lot pavement improvements for next summer. And a bid spec should be released in a matter of weeks for two rough top unit replacements at McDavid. I would like to alert the board that we had a water leak at Marlow about a week ago. Thanks to Mr. Venetico and his team for really helping out. Our maintenance staff really rolled up their sleeves and we had an impact of seven rooms initially when we came to work the first morning. But in a matter of a few days, we had it down to two rooms. We have two science rooms there, are gonna be out of commission for a few more weeks at one-oh-five and at two-oh-five, as we have to buy a few cabinets and put everything back together. Our restoration company was very proactive in opening it up, made sure it was all clear. We had air quality sample tests taken to make sure everything was, it was fine for moving back in, and people moved back in most of the rooms. Only other exciting thing I got going on right now, if you want to call it exciting, is unfortunately, we had to prepare for our snow removal season meeting, so it's coming. And we're, we're starting to get mobilized with equipment. And we've met Tovar Snow Professionals, our partner, and looked at the fund we're gonna have at the high school this year, and we, we were sure we can manage it, it's not impossible. They assured me they've got a plan. And we're gonna give the student walkways a wee bit of a facelift out there. When you come back after Columbus Day break, you'll notice we made a few minor changes. The school has been involved, the school administration, our security officer's been involved, and the construction team's been involved. We're all comfortable with what we're gonna do to make a couple minor changes. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Was there a root cause determined for that leak or not yet?
Yes, there is. There is, it's the second time in sixteen months that we've had a certain style of faucet that Mohn manufactures, that one of the two water lines that tap in, it's one of these blended ones that comes in under the counter with the hot and the water put underneath, and one of the lines snapped off. And this one, we have evidence that it had had a minor leak for quite some time and just decided to finally give up one night. Security cameras were checked and nothing unusual was going around the wing overnight or anything, it just happened to tap the last crack.
Sounds like so metal fatigue.
Sorry, pardon me?
Metal fatigue then?
I, I guess I would have to say that, it's hard to believe that, we monitor city water pressures. And there's nothing exciting going on here. We have pressure readings from every day in several systems that we monitor, and we don't have those kinds of jumps to make metal crack.
Yeah.
Something's going on. Anyway, we had some of our maintenance team then go in that vintage of the building, the original construction, and look in all the, at all the faucet sets of that style to verify that they're, they're intact. And we got a free faucet set. We're gonna replace all the, the waterline fittings of this style, there are twenty-four. So we have, we have twelve of these faucet sets in each set too. So they're, they're in the process of being replaced.
Is it just Marlow or are you expanding that to?
One of the possibility, we're only doing Marlow. One of the possibilities is that we had a pipe bidder putting sinks in fourteen years ago with big muscles. That's also a possibility. So we're just gonna start with that, we've only had, these two leaks were isolated through this.
Okay. Thank you.
And by reaching out to the manufacturer, we'd like to think that if there was any kind of factory recall or something, we would have been advised.
After fourteen years. All right, any questions from the board or the committee? All right, thank you for that report. Moving on to eight dot two, change order number two to the contract with Al Marshall Incorporated.
It's, as we've been doing roofing projects the last few years, I, I, I think I'm tempted to say it's the usual thing, but we have an allowance in the bid for roof insulation replacements as we go through the restoration process. And we uncovered only a limited number of boards that had moisture needs to be replaced, less than what was in the bid. So there's a significant savings there. We are entitled to a credit for all the background checks we had to do of the work staff that worked on this project from Al Marshall, and this is reconciling those two items against our contractor now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee or the board? Any objections with moving this forward then? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that forward to the board. Eight dot three, change order number one with Johnson Floor Company.
This is a project that was awarded about six months before we actually started the work. We had a good contractor, a good price, et cetera, and we did that back in the day. But as we got involved in the project going, we found a couple of minor adjustments that would benefit the school operation. Chesapeake a multi-purpose room, we converted it from the carpet that it was originally, and what was put in the bid was to put it back with carpet to a vinyl composite tile, which was a credit to the district. But we also found that at Lake Ghee, we had a particular room that was having problems with some of the transition strips in a kindergarten room failing. And so, pretty close to an offset you'll see in the breakdown page. We negotiated a price with the contractor to add that room to the list for that, for the year. And we also had to reconcile background check costs. And unfortunately, when they were demoing at Chesapeake, they're, they have a machine they ride, a little electric machine that's got a chipper on the front that they use when the old carpet backing is bonded to the floor a little harder than a guy can lift up by hand, and they bounced off a few of our cabinets. And so our custodial staff was very good at keeping a watchful eye on things and alerted us to the problem. We did a detailed inventory, and we're in the process of getting that replaced. We're going to contract with the service to make sure we get a likely replacement, and the contractor's gonna reimburse it. We're gonna get a credit from him on this change order.
So there's, and net is a savings to the district then, from what I saw?
Yes, a savings of two-thousand-four-hundred-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? Any objections with moving this forward then? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that one forward. Eight dot four, construction updates for the Fine Arts Edition at the high school. Anything to highlight on this end?
Well, this is the first construction update for this project where you actually have a cash flow, a contract value log sheet. So we'll bring this to you every month, until we know where our target is right now. The foundations are about done. I inspected the forms for the last piece of foundation wall today. They're thinking it might rain tomorrow. They're gonna have some bailing out of water prep work before they can actually pour, so looking, that'll happen Tuesday. And the walls will go up and the roof, the key right now for winter is when will the roof go on? And the steel is tentatively targeted for delivery in early December. That's where we are.
Okay, any questions from the committee or the board? Okay, thank you for that update. Eight dot five, Prune Farms contract extension.
The, the contract with Prune Farms is for rental of some of the farmland. It's set to expire in November this year. And our contract language with them and our bid spec are written such that we have the opportunity to consider extending that contract if we would like, if the district would choose to. And Prune Farms, at the, an acreage that was adjusted out in the last amendment was brought to you much earlier this year as we began to realize that the solar project was going to be a reality, and we had to make a small acreage reduction, which is outlined in here for background for you folks. They're making an offer to extend the contract for three more years at the same rate per acre. But they're asking that their payments be split into two payments per year to help them with their cash flow. And from what I understand from my leadership, that should not be a problem.
Okay, any questions in the committee?
I have a conflict, I can't comment.
Okay.
We'll also have to keep it off of consent.
Consent, okay. You probably saw this on here, there are a couple of things in the letter, although I think you've got the details hashed out. He skipped a year and, and the dates, he went from twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-three?
It's the, it's the crop. Okay.
But he missed twenty-two.
Oh, my bad.
And that was in his original letter. And then the other thing was, in the following sentence, there's a decimal point missing. It's eighteen comma four oh six, and then it should be dot ninety-two.
What I could do for the board, if you'd like.
Otherwise, there's, the number's not quite right.
I could put the actual amendment form with the.
I, I think we get the gist of what he was trying to say, but just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Okay. Any, any questions or comments from the board otherwise? Any additional beyond Mr. Flock? All right, we'll go ahead and move that to the, to the regular board agenda then. And that's it for Buildings and Grounds. All right. Nothing on legislation, we'll go to Board of Education. You see the minutes for the regular meetings, committee of the whole, special meetings, and the budget meeting. Are there any questions or comments on those? Not, we'll move those forward. And I understand we have no closed session items? Okay, so we'll skip, skip eleven. I guess I could have pulled that off the agenda now that I think about it. We don't have to resume or take any action. So, that being said, it is seven forty-five PM, I will make a motion to adjourn. Second from Ms. Malendi, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we're adjourned.